Good evening and welcome to the November 2025 Board Meeting. Welcome to those of you in the room and those of you watching remotely streaming us tonight, I guess. We were just saying how much fun it is to have a room full of people for a board meeting, recognizing that after recognitions, it will be, it will be a smaller crowd, but it's still exciting. So Ms. Bean, would you call roles?
Mr. Babbitt.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mrs. Johann.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Reagan.
Here.
Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Here. A couple of items before we get to our first item on the agenda. First, we'd like to welcome Dr. Tim Reeves to the dais tonight. Dr. Jaeger couldn't be with us tonight, so Dr. Reeves is sitting in, so thank you for that. And then, this was an election week, and I personally, and I think I can speak for the Board, are excited that our three incumbent members were reelected and will continue to work with us, Ms. Julie Steele, Ms. Becky Johann, and Mr. Rob Kuhn. So, congrats, guys. And with that, I would welcome a motion to adopt the agenda.
Simple.
Motion by Brad Boyd, second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes. And I'm going to take a step back, so excited with all of this that I forgot the pledge. So, we do have some students from this, and here they come, Civic Leadership Academy, and they're going to lead us in the pledge. Thank you for being here this evening.
(inaudible)
Ms. Karuba.
Yeah, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to all of our guests and honorees. To begin our recognitions tonight, I would like to welcome to the front our Director of Community Development, Heather Schoonover, along with her retired Employee Association Board members. Come on to the front. Well, we are very excited. Come on up, come on up. We are so excited to recognize this very special group tonight. The Olathe Public Schools Retired Employee Association, also known as OPS REA, is celebrating 25 years of support to Olathe Public Schools. This is the only group of its kind in Johnson County, Kansas, with a robust and active membership of 200-plus people. The organization includes classified and certified staff members, retirees, and provides an opportunity for retirees to serve district students and the Olathe community, keep in touch with former colleagues, and make new friends through social activities. The OPS REA hosts fundraising events to generate support for activities and scholarships. The Marcia Stoker Scholarship is eligible for two high school graduates pursuing a degree in education, and the Mary Cochran Classified Staff Scholarship is available for a classified Olathe District employee working toward becoming a certified educator. Through the Legislation and Kansas Association of Retired School Personnel Committee, members are informed about legislative and state retirement issues that impact retired school district employees, and the group collaborates with the school district about benefits available to retirees. Tonight, we are especially honored to have founding members of the organization who started the organization with the support of Superintendent Dr. Ron Wimmer, Diane Steele, Rheda Rynell, and Fran Graham. Could you please wave? This is truly an exceptional organization of some of the very best Olathe staff. Please join me in congratulating our Olathe Public Schools Retired Employee Association on 25 years of commitment to our district. Thank you so much, you guys. Well, as they find their way to their seats, next, we would like to welcome two student athletes who are gaining national attention, Olathe South Junior Eve Long and Olathe East Junior Irene Getcha, along with their Principals, Dr. Sean Demery, and Athletic Director Andrew Miller, and Principal Carrie Lane. These superstar athletes, and I do mean superstars, are pretty impressive, and we are so excited to celebrate them tonight. Eve Long is a member of the USA Under-16 National Team, and this summer, she was able to earn a gold medal with the team, representing both Olathe and our country at the highest level for her age. Eve is now ranked the number-nine player in the class of 2027 National Rankings with offers from schools like Baylor, Miami, Louisville, Kansas, Kansas State, and several others, and she will begin her college visits next semester. We are so excited to have her representing us at the national level. And Irene, I know we've had her here before for some state diving championships, but she is a member of the U.S. Junior Olympic Dive Team, and most recently competed at the highest level at the Junior National Diving Competition in California. Her administrators tell us that Irene balances a very full load of AP courses while also maintaining a busy dive schedule. She recently verbally committed to Rice University to continue her athletic and academic journey as a D1 diver. Congratulations. Yes, family, come take pictures. I don't know about you, but when I was a junior in high school, I was not an Olympic athlete, so that's pretty impressive. On that same note of impressive students, I would now like to welcome to the front our high school seniors who have been named National Merit semifinalists. And I'm going to have all of you come up at once with your Principals. There's a lot of you this year, so come on to the front, along with your Principal, Olathe North Jason Herman, Olathe Northwest Chris Zuck, Olathe South Sean Demery, and Olathe West Principal Jay Novacek. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation has announced the names of approximately 16,000 semifinalists in the 70th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. And in the Olathe Public Schools, we are proud to have 19 seniors who were named National Merit semifinalists. These extraordinary seniors have achieved this distinguished honor through their outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT tests. Becoming a National Merit semifinalist is a remarkable accomplishment. These students are among the, among the top academic performers, with less than 1% of high school seniors nationwide achieving this honor. So as I call your name, please feel free to step forward or wave, but at Olathe East High School, we have Elijah Humble and Jack Kennedy. At Olathe North High School, we have Katherine Chang, Alexander Hannish, Drake Heimsaw, Aiden Johnson, Arshika Khanna, Ariel Lee, Garrett Lee, Dominic Merrican, Bennett Morris, Hrithik Ranganathan, and Gavin Windsor. And then at Olathe Northwest High School, we have Brady Uden and Samantha Fuller, and at South, there's Nicholas Hammond and Jack Mutter. Congratulations, you guys. My goodness, I just flipped the page. I forgot our Olathe West friends. I'm sorry, Aiden and Hayden. Goodness, there's just too many of you. Congratulations, all. Any other parents want to get pictures? Come on up. Congratulations. Well, I am personally so excited for this final recognition, as I get the chance to recognize my team for their recent success, both at the state and national levels. So I would like to welcome to the front our Assistant Director of Communications, Erin Schulte, our Senior Communications Specialist, Jaylee Postleway, our Multimedia Specialist, Holden Potter, and our Graphic Designer, Sarah Rathbone. Marlene Colgan, our Webmaster, couldn't attend this evening, and Tony Wrangle, our Assistant Director of Visual Media, is currently live streaming upstairs. So on the count of three, let's all say hi, Tony. One, two, three. Hi, Tony. Our team won four national awards from the National School Public Relations Association, including one Award of Excellence, two Awards of Merit, and one Honorable Mention for our 2324 Annual Report, the Discover the Olathe Advantage School News Magazine, our Human Resources Branding Campaign, and a photo series from Central Elementary's Pay It Forward Club. But we also had some success recently at the state level. We were able to take home 10 Kansas School Public Relations Association's Publication Contest Awards, and that included five Awards of Excellence, three Honorable Mentions, and two Awards of Merit for projects such as our rebrand, the Welcome to Our Classroom video series, as well as social media stories like our short video from senior graduation walks that went viral in May with a combined 60,000 likes and 3 million views and counting. I am so proud of the work that my team does every day, but I am even more proud that I get to work with you guys. And I just want to thank you for all you do for Olathe Public Schools and the stories that you guys tell. You are often the wizard behind the curtain and the unsung heroes in my eyes, so thank you for all that you do.
Tonight, we have several presentations, and we are going to begin with our school spotlight, which this month is Olathe East High School. And it's my understanding that we have some student presenters, along with Ms. Lane, tonight.
Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here to present some highlights about Olathe East. The biggest highlight at Olathe East is our people, and I'm going to introduce you to two fabulous people that are going to take this presentation away. Behind the scenes, we have Sidney. Sidney, raise your hand. Sidney's a junior at Olathe East, and our Future Educators Academy. What you'll see created here is called a Bitmoji Classroom. And then my presenters for the evening are Ms. Kay McGory and the senior Pete...
Izzo.
Izzo, who I know really well, I just blanked out on his name. Pete Izzo is a senior, and Kay Cadence is also a senior, so we're going to let Pete Izzo shake it away.
Hope everyone's doing good tonight. Really excited to be here. Ms. Lane's always talking about how this is the place to be on Thursday nights.
Pete, I'm, Pete, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to ask you to move because of the microphone and the streaming. We need the presenters to speak from there. Thank you.
Well, I'm just really, really grateful for the opportunity to talk about the school that I love. My name's Pete Izzo, and I, I've been in the school district for 13 years, I think, since kindergarten. I attended Regency Plays, California Trail, and now I'm at Olathe East. And at school, I'm, I participate in football, basketball, and track. I'm a two-year captain for the football team, and I'm a part of Hawk Nation, which I'll be able to talk about more later, FCA, which is Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and I'm Vice President for National Honor Society. And for college, I plan to play football somewhere, and I'm not sure exactly where I want, what I want to study, but probably something in math.
It's always hard to follow Pete, but I'm Kay. It's nice to meet you. I first attended Rolling Ridge, I should say, I've been in Olathe for about 12 years. I first attended Rolling Ridge, moved to this side of town where I attended Black Bob Elementary, and then just right next door at Frontier Trail. That means that Olathe East is not my home school, but I got to attend because I've also been a part of the Future Educators Academy for four years now. I have loved it at East. My time there has been spent mostly in speech and debate, where I am now the captain, in IPS, which is our Peer Mentoring Program, in Be the Voice, which is our mental advocacy club, Mental Health Advocacy Club, and K Club, which surprisingly is not a personal fan club for me, though sometimes we get it confused. It's our Kansas Association for Youth Service Club, and after high school, I hope to attend UMKC on the secondary education track.
First, I, I'm going to talk a little bit about the demographic at Olathe East and how it's changed over the last 10 years. As you can see, the population has reduced by about 200 over the last 10 years, but that was to be expected just because of our, how the area is landlocked and how, as people move away, they choose to sit, stay near Olathe East, which I cannot blame them. But with that, the language of spoken has increased by 10, and that just gives the students at Olathe East a really great opportunity to learn about students from different areas and just to really, just, yeah, be with other people that are different than them. And our free and reduced lunch is up to 32%, and that just really highlights the socioeconomic diversity of Olathe East, and also the reason, you can see the reason ethnicity percent and how they've changed, and it just shows how Olathe East is changing and to be a much more diverse and a great place for students to be.
And then, oh my gosh, and then I'll touch a little bit on our academics. We're super, super proud of everything we do academically. Our teachers hold us to a really high standard and kind of expect us to be the best of the best, and as you can see, we are. The last year, we had the highest AP test scores in the district, which is something we're super proud to achieve. The last nine years, we've had the highest number of SEALs of Biliteracy. In case you're not familiar with that, it's an award based on the stamp test, which is a language proficiency test. Students have to receive an intermediate, mid, or higher level on all four sections. If you have any questions about that, Pete's actually a recipient, so he can tell you a little bit more. We're also the first Kansas school to implement the 3DE program, which is Three-Dimensional Learning. It incorporates real-life challenges and businesses with our curriculum on a city, state, and national level. We are the host of three, four-year programs, Civic Leadership, Future Educators Academy, and our Design Academy. And lastly, we have 15 Debate Academic All-Americans, which will hopefully be 16, as I'm currently working on my own.
Next, I just, I'm going to talk a little bit, a little bit about the athletics here at Olathe East. We do have the most state championships out of all Olathe schools, which, again, highest state P score, most state championships, pretty cool place to be. Ada Schweller, she's one of my friends here at Olathe East. She was the Sunflower League Pitcher of the Year in Allstate, and she's just a really great athlete and a great student as well. And Brett Carroll, someone who I had the privilege of playing alongside for one year and being on the same team for two years, is just an amazing leader. He's up at Minnesota now and killing it, should be starting next year, and the first ever two-time state wrestling champion for Olathe East. And just really, the leadership that he's, that he had at Olathe East still stands through the program, and it really, it's just really beneficial to have people like that coming through the program, so that way we know how to uphold the standard that just runs through Olathe East. As you met earlier, Irene, she's, she's amazing. I'm a senior, and I feel like I'm in some tough classes. She's in those tough classes with me. So if, if that, if that tells you whatever you need to know about Irene, just a great athlete and also takes the classroom very seriously. And this past year, we were the first Olathe school to start the Girls' Flag Football Team. Coach Iow started that, and that should be, I don't know too much about it, but I believe it's going to become Acacia sanctioned sport soon. And so it's just really, I got to go out to one, and it was just really cool to see. And then Audrey Leonard this past year was East's first girls wrestling, wrestling state champion, who also takes athletics, her academics very seriously. And Merrick Disman, I believe, two years ago graduated. He was recently recognized for, he was the national winner of the Spirit of Sport Award, and, yeah.
And then we're super proud of our athletics. We're also super proud of our activities. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our Peer Mentoring Program, which I've been super proud to be a part of. We have over 75 peer mentors in our program, and we work one-on-one with the students in that classroom. It's super awesome, one of our favorite things to have at East, one of our largest programs. Another one of our huge programs is our theater program, which we actually have a show going on tonight as we speak. We have 35 Starlight Blue Star Awards, which is the most out of the whole district. We also have notable alumni, Justin Cooley, who was nominated for a Tony Award and is currently performing on Broadway. And then I have to mention, I'm a little bit biased, but our debate program has been super successful. We have more national debate qualifiers every year than any other, well, actually, than all of the other Olathe high schools combined. And then our former, our former debater and current coach, Easton Logback, was the national top speaker in 2021 for Lincoln Douglas Debate, and then combined, that meant that last year we were the Acacia Top 6A Performing Arts School, which is something we take a lot of pride in.
What makes Olathe East so special, really, it's not all of the different accomplishments we're listing here, it's the people and it's the community. And this past year, we won, or, sorry, for the past three years, we've won the Mayor's Pennies for Shoe, which is now starting up soon. And just last week, we made the ESPN Honor Roll as a part of our national unified sports team, and that's just, it's a really cool opportunity. I'm not sure how aware you guys are with the IPS program, but it's just, it's just such a great program here we have at Olathe East. And last year, we raised the most money of any school from the Kansas Polar Plunge, and it was cold, let me tell you, let me tell you that. But it was just really cool to see the community gather around. I know Ms. Lane's son plays football up at Baker, and he was able to get a good group of his teammates to come out and support, and it's just really cool to see how the community comes around Olathe East. And also, the Fathers Club, I believe it is the best in Olathe, they're just, they're just always around. I mean, finals, they're handing out Chick-fil-A sandwiches, they're at lunch telling us jokes, giving out fruit snacks, the Olathe South versus Olathe East basketball game, they're doing competition, just really great, really great to have good role models. And we also, we take pride in our Hawk Fund, which provides different things like caps, gowns, and whatever those who cannot afford need in our community. Our, the parents do a really great job of gathering around and pitching in to give whatever those in need, need to have. And incredible, we have great, incredible school spirit, which is Hawk Nation, which I was talking about earlier. We just, we take a lot of pride in the fact that we do not just, it's not just athletics that we are here to cheer on, we also go out to the theater events, and it's just really cool to see how everybody at Olathe East supports everybody, and it's just, it's a really great place to be.
All right, and finally, if you don't buy it from us, if you're not convinced, we have a video of some of our students and staff talking about how much they love Olathe East in their own words, so here you go.
My favorite thing about Olathe East is how inclusive everyone is. You really feel like it's a strong community where everybody is included together, and we all work together as one.
My favorite thing about Olathe East is probably like how involving everyone in sports is important to them and like point talk and stuff like that.
My favorite thing about Olathe East is probably track and field or lunch with my friends.
My favorite thing about East is all of the different students that you get in a class. You get a variety of different backgrounds, different cultures, different experiences, and when you get a really good class, all the kids come in and bring those experiences, and it just makes the school a really, really unique and cool place.
My favorite thing about East is the people here.
My favorite thing at Olathe East is the people, students, staff, administrators, custodians, everybody here is, or are just great people.
What I like about Olathe is I like about the people.
My favorite thing about East is my friends.
My favorite thing about East is all the people. Everyone's really nice.
My favorite thing about Olathe East is probably my friends and always seeing them and having classes with them.
My favorite thing about Olathe East is probably the theater program.
My favorite thing, mentorship program with an IPS class.
My favorite thing about East is how big it is and how the teachers are really nice.
So my favorite thing has got to be the vending machines and the awesome drinks I can get.
My favorite things about Olathe East, all of it. I love this school. I love these kids. I think that they're really fun, and I've just, I'm just always pleased with all of the kids and how hard they work and how much fun they have, and I'm just happy to be here.
Again, thank you so much for having us here. I want to give special props to our video production team that put together that last video, and then, of course, to Mr. Izzo and Ms. McGory, and then Ms. Lenny for putting together this presentation for you this evening. So please, give it up.
That was delightful. It truly was, very entertaining and also delightful. Board, any comments or questions?
I just want to give your, the speakers, the students who put together and executed that presentation, some mad props. Coming and speaking at a place like this is, can be very intimidating, and it says a lot about the, the, your maturity and the skills you've gained from your academic experience here in Olathe Public Schools, that you were able to come here, talk in such a way that you're comfortable, funny, I mean, it, that, those are skills that are going to take you, I mean, communication is so important, and I, I leaned over to Mrs. Johann, I was like, I am so impressed by these kids. So, yes, wonderful, and the pride for your school is really heartwarming.
Wait, not finished yet, Mr. Babbitt.
I just wanted to say that my son will be attending East in four years, and now I'm super excited about it. I actually knew very little about East because I'm newer to Olathe compared to some of these people, but now I'm just as excited as, as I can be, so thank you guys very much for the excitement.
Were there, were there little hidden things in the Bitmoji slides? I was looking from each one to see if there was something different, you know?
Like Easter eggs?
Find it, was there, or, or, okay. Okay. You don't have to answer that if you don't want to.
We don't.
Okay. And go home and watch yourselves on YouTube. You can see how well you did. All right, thank you for being here tonight. Our next presentation is in regards to American Education Week. And we have Dr. Marta Silva and Sofia Ricondo.
Dr. Silva could not be here this evening. I am Jennifer Curry. I'm an elementary music teacher at Washington Elementary School. And this is my 20th year in the district.
And I'm Sofia Ricondo, and I'm an interpreter for Summit Trail. And this is my third year as an interpreter.
The National Education Association was one of the creators and original sponsors of American Education Week. Distressed that 25% of the country's World War I draftees were illiterate and 9% were physically unfit, representatives of the NEA and the American Legion met in 1919 to seek ways to generate public support for education. The conventions of both organizations subsequently adopted resolutions of support for a national effort to raise public awareness of the importance of education. In 1921, the NEA Representative Assembly in Des Moines, Iowa, called for the designation of one week each year for the purpose of informing, excuse me, purpose of informing the public of the accomplishment and the needs of public schools and secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. The first observance of American Education Week occurred December 4th through the 10th in 1921, with the NEA and American Legion as cosponsors. Today, over 14 organizations co-sponsor the week to spotlight the important role of our public schools for nearly 90% of children in America who attend them. And you can see some of those shown up on the slide. Olathe's first public school was held in 1862 at different places in town, among them the Masonic Hall and the Methodist Church. It was open to pupils ages 5 to 21. In 1868, six years before Olathe was organized into a school district, the town built its first permanent school building at a cost of $10,000. It was a substantial two-story stone structure, known as the Stone or Old Rock School, which reportedly accommodated four teachers and about 175 pupils. It may have been the school that George Washington Carver attended for two years. In 1883, Central Grade School opened. In 1889, two smaller grade schools opened, Washington and Lincoln. Lincoln was for black pupils. And after moving to a new building in 1917, was closed in the 1950s when the Olathe Elementary Schools were integrated. So as a side note, Washington Elementary is celebrating its 50th year this year. And so we've got a big sense of pride there. Now, the Olathe Public Schools serve 29,000 students plus, who speak 84 and more languages in 58 schools and facilities. We offer 23 career pathways, some of which will move to the district's newest construction project, the Olathe Innovation Campus. Across the country, schools will celebrate excellence in education by hosting kickoff events and activities. We encourage the schools in our very own Olathe district to join the celebration. And today, we will share examples of what you can do as an educator or community member for each day of American Education Week. So one idea for Monday for the kickoff on November 17th is that students would share what they would do if they were the principal. And education workers and community members could share what their favorite thing about their school or their education building is. On this day, on Tuesday, schools across the nation invite parents and caring adults into the classroom to experience what the day is like for their child. Ongoing research shows that parental involvement and family support in schools improves student achievement, reduces absenteeism, and restores confidence in public education. All right, for Family Day, we invite families into our schools so you can see what your child experiences. And we invite you to have conversations at home about your students' favorite subjects, the best time of the school day. Hopefully, it's not always recess and lunch. Hopefully. And then also, what do they like best about their school or about their teacher? Or even share what a caring adult's favorite school memories. Maybe you sharing with your child about some of your memories. Education Support Professionals Day was first celebrated in 1987 after the NEA's Representative Assembly, the association's decision-making body of nearly 8,000 member delegates, called upon the organization to honor the contributions of all school support staff. National ESP Day is observed on Wednesday of American Education Week. Our classified staff does everything, from feeding our students, to ensuring that they have a clean environment, to making sure their devices work. Our schools would simply not run without them. All right, so some ideas for Wednesday, November 19th, ESP Day, is to encourage your educators, students, school leaders, and parents to share personalized messages or thank-you cards to the classified staff in their schools and across the district. And to continue expanding opportunities for our classified staff voices to be heard. Educator For A Day is an opportunity for community members to experience the day as educators and experience the joy and the challenges of working in public education. We invite community members into our schools to help meet the needs of our students. You can reach out to your student's school for opportunities to help, or you can contact the Community Development Department at 913-780-8233 for information about district-wide programs like mentoring, classroom support, and watchdogs. All right, a few ideas for Thursday. Educators invite families into your learning spaces. Hourly education workers invite educators to help or observe part of your job that they don't normally see. Community members, come in and read to our students. Talk about your career or share other educational information. And for the students, definitely dress as your favorite educator. Substitute Educators Day is a result of members advocacy at the 2003 NEA Representative Assembly, which called for an increased appreciation of school substitute employees. These educators provide a critical link in the education of public school students by serving as a bridge to provide continued quality education in the temporary absence of their educators. Time off is crucial for educators to provide the best education for students on days of professional learning, medical and mental health, and responsibilities outside of the school. Great substitutes make this possible. The Viernes is the Day of the Substituto. The Day of the Education of Substitutos is the result of the defense of a member in the Assembly of the Represensation of NA of 2003, in the case that it was a major recognition of the employees of the substitution of the schools. These educators contribute a fundamental to the education of the students and of the public schools, given the opportunity to provide a continuous quality education in the absence of their educators. The time is crucial for educators to provide a better education for the students for reasons of professional training, medical, and mental health. Olathe has opportunities to substitute as teachers, a para or a clerical help, counselors, and nurses. To learn more, call the district at 913-780-8188 or email subservices@olatheschools.org. All right, a few ideas for Friday, November 21st, is to arrange a school-wide recognition of substitute educators in the read-aloud, school bulletin, or on the intercom announcements, or maybe write a note of appreciation to a sub who goes above and beyond. One thing that we do at Washington is we don't have substitutes. We have guest teachers, because we really feel that they need that. So those are just a few ideas for Friday. Our district is one of over 13,000 public school districts in the U.S. We know that their future is our future. We exist for every student, every day, and invite you all to celebrate American Education Week with us. Thank you for your time. Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for that presentation this evening, and congratulations to our educators this next week during American Educator Week, all educators, staff in the building. Item 4.03, each year, the Olathe Public Schools Board of Education develops and votes on legislative priorities for the upcoming session. The draft priorities for this school year are attached for the 2026 legislative session, and they're attached under future action. We will take action on those items at the December meeting. This evening, we have Dr. Stuart Little with Little Government Relations to provide a legislative update, and he will also respond to any thoughts or questions the board may have regarding those draft legislative positions. Dr. Little, thanks for being here this evening. It's been a bit since we've seen you. There we go.
All right. It's good to see you all again. I'm gonna give a brief overview of kind of where we are, more likely what's coming than what's happened in the past, because the Education Funding Task Force has not met since September 2nd or 3rd, and so we've got a gap in time here before we kind of get going. We're 60 days away from the beginning of the session. I hate to say that, but that's, that's where we are. So I'll briefly just note, we ended in April, we're starting back up to 12th of January. There have been ongoing issues at the state level about all kinds of things. Everyone in various agencies around the state, including in public education, have had to deal with the kind of uncertainty and the change and the give and take coming from the federal government. Now, obviously, the things that are going on with SNAP and WIC and related to the government shutdown, those are having an impact on our students' lives and those kind of things. So there's a tremendous number of issues kind of out there right now, and we're gonna get into the legislative session where some of those are gonna play out. I note on here that the effort to have a special legislative session that was supposed to start tomorrow has been canceled, obviously, that they didn't have the votes to go through and talk about redistricting. That will be discussed in January when the legislature comes back. They'll be, we'll have that same conversation in January, so it's not done. 2026 is an election year. That session is going to be very fast. We will be in and out very quickly. The legislature wants to do some property tax cuts, some other things, and try to get done and move on into the campaign cycle. We'll be electing a new governor next fall. We will have as well every member of the Kansas House up for election. So there's, there's lots coming in the future, and in the midst of things, this is just kind of an accounting of where we've gone with the budget reconciliation bill, the, the money related to a lot of different things, and kind of the latest reiteration of this was the Department of Education and what's been going on with the IDEA Division and, and those kinds of issues. And I'm frankly, the up and down of that, I'm not sure where we stand there. There's probably somebody that knows that better than me. This is probably the main thing I want to hit for you all here tonight, as you go into having conversation about the legislative platform the next time you get together. So we now have a new budget process, and that means that the legislature last year, and again this year now, is stepping into the budget process, taking agencies' budgets, looking at them, removing the things they don't like, draft a budget bill, and then when the legislature comes in, they have this bill, and they begin working on the bill. And then when the governor makes recommendations for her, her budget, those are suggestions that the legislature will choose to add or not. Fifty, sixty years, the governor has always said, this is the budget, let's work from this. So we've kind of turned the tables, and that's where, for example, last legislative session, when it went through that process, the $92 million for special education funding was removed from the budget, and so then we went into the legislative process, and as you will recall, we went through one committee, because there was only one chamber, the House, that actually had hearings on budgets. The Senate didn't even do that. That's part of the speed, that's part of the legislative budget. The point of that is that we had to fight to get $35 million on the table, I believe it was, and then by the time it got to full committee, it was down to $10 million added to special education. And that's on purpose. That's part of why that process works that way now. Instead of putting people on the record to pull out $92 million, we are going through this struggle to get $10 million for special education. So we're in that same situation again. That will frame everything as we go into this legislative session. The Education Task Force was gonna meet one more time. They, I think wisely, have decided that they need to have some expertise in terms of modeling a school finance formula, do some work. So they're gonna get together sometime. They can meet up until the 11th of January. They can't meet when the legislature's in session, but, well, theoretically, because we're gonna talk about that in a minute, but they will talk about what they want in terms of parameters for an entity to do modeling. And that's very, very helpful, because when they've tried, tried, this is wrong, when they have looked at models through their meetings and made adjustments to the school finance formula, missing from every one of those are the, the third and fourth tier implications. If you switch, you know, at-risk waiting or low enrollment waiting, and you recalculate that, it impacts everybody's local option budgets. And so all of those things get shifted around, and there's not quite the sophistication, I don't think, to do what needs to be done right now. So they're gonna hire a consultant to do that. That's what will, will happen. So as we get into the 2026 legislative session, in general, there's a belief that we're not gonna do an education bill during the, a funding formula bill during the 2026 legislature. Some suggest it's because we don't want to have this conversation before the election. We don't want to generate a product before the election, and then we come back and we, or we're not ready to do that, those kinds of things. But I wouldn't be surprised, since there have been no public hearings at all on the school finance formula, other than when they took input from special education directors on a proposed modification to the current formula. I wouldn't be surprised if some of the, the education committees may have some informational hearings, or what would you like to see in at-risk, or high-density at-risk, those kinds of things, that may try to be presented as testimony on a bill and those kind of things. The chair of the Education Task Force switches in January, and so there'll be a House Chair. The House Chair is also Chair of the House Education Committee, and she has suggested at one of the last couple meetings that she has some interest in having the task force continue to meet during the legislative session, to continue doing work, whether that's on a Friday afternoon, when the schedule's light, or a Monday morning. But that's part of what is in the mix. So I can't tell you exactly how everything's gonna play out during that session, because this is all up, and there are probably people more powerful than me that know exactly what's gonna happen, but that's not been part of the conversation. I, I do know this, that when that session ends, and it'll end early in April, probably, yeah, if they're going to do this, they will need to meet throughout the fall, summer, fall. A school finance bill, according to the statute that created the task force, requires submission of a bill on the 11th of January, so that 2027, so it has to be written, and school finance bills don't get written quickly. So they, they're theoretically supposed to have a bill introduced, which means you're gonna, we're gonna spend a lot of time in the summer and in the fall, writing, having them look at a bill and put some things together, and then we show up on the 11th of January and see how things go. I don't know to the extent to where there'll be hearings, those kinds of things, but there will be a lot of things that, as I'm meeting with people and talking with people in here again tonight, that we need to be doing in the spring and in the summer to be keeping our, the public and our legislative delegation informed on what's going on and what's going to happen. Because when we get to January of 2027, it will be a very interesting legislative session. I'm happy to answer questions.
Board, any questions, comments?
I'm glad you got all the good news before I.
Ms. Steele.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Always appreciate you being here and appreciate the work that you do in Topeka on our behalf. And you're very informative of not only what's happening, but the process behind what's happening. So thank you for that. I want to focus just a little bit, and I'm really glad you took your, your presentation this direction, about the timing. We are in the process and have already met with one of our legislators in a, in a two or three-on-one, inviting them into our schools, and I was really thankful for that. One of the conversations that came from the most recent visit that we had with the legislator was her concern over us being overly concerned about a product that hasn't been produced. So in that conversation, Dr. Jaeger and I shared the timing, which is exactly what you brought up, and also the runs that have been presented through the Education Task Force Committee, which is, how many do you think? They've done a lot of what-if.
At least probably 300.
Runs. In every single one of those, Olathe does not prosper, and we have less to work with. So we were explaining to her, the timing is a concern, because we want to be involved during the process, not just when a product is put forth and produced, but also when they are pushing out these what-if runs, which we understand are scenarios that they're trying to exercise and look at in different ways. It is a concern for Olathe Public Schools, and, and we need to be engaged, beginning, middle, and end, on this whole process. So thank you for addressing that, and I would say your, your recommendation, advice to us, would be to continue being engaged throughout the process if the task force meets again. And when, I should say not if, when the task force meets again, and continue to be engaged.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There, this is not going to happen quickly, so it's gonna take a long time to get to a final point where then it'll get into that pot of the legislature to do things.
And thank you for pointing out, too, that the statute states that a recommendation is to be presented to the governor by January, and we all know what a year is like. It's like a blink anymore. So, and what has to happen to get there is, it's monumental. So it may be July 1 of 2027, which can sound really far away, but January, basically 1st, it's the 11th of 2027, doesn't to me. When I think about the amount of work that has to go into a funding formula that's gonna be the, the best it can be for a district like, what, what can I say, Valley Heights, where my husband went, and, and graduating classes are 22, Olathe Public Schools, that is a monumental task. So thank you for encouraging us to continue to be involved in the entire process, because I think that's important. We cannot wait for a product to be produced and then start getting engaged.
Well, you've baited me into bringing this up, so I'm gonna say this now by your question. I've spent a lot of time looking at the 1992, 91, 92, when they wrote the current school finance formula. Very different circumstances, financially, politically, all those kinds of things. But that process ended up with the school finance formula we have, because the components in it satisfied, what, what was the little district?
Valley Heights.
Valley Heights needed, which were things like low enrollment waiting and equalization of local option budget, and the state took over more funding, so there wouldn't be all property taxes in that one little district. And then the things that a district like Olathe, which I think was 7,000 students at that time, were LOB, and what eventually became correlation waiting or high enrollment waiting, and was low enrollment waiting for the, the rural districts, and, and those kinds of things. And that, this resolution to that process was about size and geography, and partisanship at a certain level was a part, it never goes away. It never goes away. But the resolution of that, long into the 2020, 1992 session, was about how does this impact my district? And at a certain point, partisan politics was not the guiding force. And frankly, how whatever's gonna get generated impacts local school districts is gonna be how people vote. Because that's a kind of a given, because in some ways, it, it requires a person to make a choice between my community and following somebody else's guidance. And that's exactly what happened in 92.
Ms. Reagan. Well, now that you've said that, so what I'm hearing you say is that the delegation that represents the Olathe Public Schools needs to hear from the constituency that is served by our district, because they may be more likely to make decisions in regard to school finance based on their local needs than perhaps their partisan loyalty based on the 1992 result. I heard you say the community was what they had in mind. So what I'm hearing you say is that our community needs to also stay engaged and aware of this process.
I like it when you did that, but every school district should be doing that at the same time. Yeah, absolutely.
Board, any other comments, questions? Dr. Little, thank you again for being here this evening. Item 4.04, Bond 2026. John Hutchinson will present information regarding a potential bond referendum. And then, Board, we will be asked to take action regarding this proposed March 20, March 3rd, 2026 referendum later tonight in this meeting. So, Mr. Hutchinson, thank you for being here, and again, I would like to compliment you on the presentation at School Site Council Monday evening. I've, I actually have received feedback from several community members about that presentation in a positive way as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you for saying that, because you're gonna see a lot of it again this evening. As you mentioned, later in the agenda, you'll be asked to consider a recommendation that staff's presenting regarding Bond 2026. But I'd like to take just a few minutes kind of review. We've had a lot of conversations over the last several meetings about what factors are, are leading us to our recommendation, so, why is it not working? All right, we'll try this. Sorry, try that. There we go. Just a quick reminder about the buckets. That seems to be resonating with people. As we've talked about, they all independently have a specific purpose, but they're all three very interrelated. So if, if we can free up, we are able to free up space in our capital outlay bucket by utilizing bond financing. That helps both capital outlay, and it helps operating funds as well. We've discussed that forever. We were known as that, that large growing, fast-growing district, all the way pre-2020, sometimes 1,000 kids a year. Then 2020 arrives, and we see our first decline, slight rebound with the last four years, where we're steadily declining. And as we look to the future, we see that that's gonna be a continued trend, where we're gonna continue to lose enrollment, mainly because of birth rates across the area, which just mirror what's happening across the state and across the nation, as well as the shift in our home prices, that we do not have, possess those starter homes that we once did. We went through a lot of myth-busting, and it really settles into some particular facts about our school district, and that is that we can't generate the same level of capital outlay that our neighbors can. And so that makes us more bond-dependent. That's why we continue to utilize bond financing. However, our neighbors do issue bonds, and they do it frequently. They just, they're just not as dependent on them as we are. And while we no longer need the bond funds to accommodate our growth, we do have an obligation to maintain the buildings that we have, seek efficiencies. You'll see in our recommendation through consolidation of school sites, utilizing bond funds, and maintain our investment in technology. And also, once again, if we, through the utilization of those bond funds, we're able to free up operating dollars to assist with retaining and attracting quality staff. Reviewing the ETC survey results, once again, what we're Reviewing the ETC survey results, once again, what was resonating in that survey, what our public seemed to support was this idea of maintaining our $6.2 million, $6.2 million square foot of existing facilities. So, protect that investment. Middle school locker room renovations, additional playground equipment, now that we've made them ADA compliant with a base amount of equipment. There's a desire for additional. Investing in our high schools and athletic activity centers and spaces to meet current educational needs, and also the emergence of female sports. We've always had girls' sports. However, there are more sports now. Girls' wrestling, we just heard about a champion. We heard about the beginning of a flag football. KESHA is bringing flag football, and participation rates are up. So, that coupled with the addition of Olathe West is putting a lot of pressure on both indoor and outdoor spaces in our district. Safety and security improvements, technology replacement enhancements resonated, as well as did replacement of our older buildings, such as Metal Lane. Once again, highlighting, the biggest support came in the way of the idea of consolidating sites for efficiency. If some of our end-of-life buildings, if we could combine two into one new building, that gains us efficiencies and also provides a more equitable learning space for some of our population in our oldest facilities. Again, we looked at various levels of bond financing, 200 million, 400 million, 600 million. And we found that very interesting thing, that there's only a 5% difference between the support at 200 million and 600 million. So, it doesn't mean we just immediately go to 600 million. It really just means generally, people are either supportive, or they don't, they are not supportive. Once the number is large, they kind of, they kind of lose the exactly how much that amount really is. So, the categories that we're recommending later in the agenda, the first is, we want to do some instrument replacement and some fine art investment. We need to jumpstart a replacement cycles for orchestra and band equipment. We want to allocate a million dollars there. Interesting enough, a very good high school cello or bass saxophone lasts 20 years. So, it's not like we're using bond financing for a three-year asset. The life of that asset matches well with the life of the bond. We're also recommending constructing two elementaries in order to replace four of our end-of-life elementary schools. So, it will gain that operating efficiency and also bring educational spaces up to today's standards. We also are recommending the rebuild of Metal Lane. Metal Lane is our oldest building in the school district, and is still an integral part in our programming. So, we are recommending that we completely rebuild. Similar to Santa Fe, you could try to tear down the oldest portions and redo this. You end up at roughly the same cost as just trying to replacing the building all at once. We're recommending $55 million for high school updates. The older buildings will obviously get a more significant investment. We've been doing a lot of work at Olathe North. Olathe South's 40 years old next year, and even Olathe West could use some adjustments. It's at the 10-year mark now. Middle schools, in looking at the survey results, that locker room renovation in order to bring more privacy, and then also weight rooms are in need of repair and upgrade. And at the elementary, we've been, the last few bond issues, we've done a lot of, a lot of work at the elementary level. At this point, we're recommending $4 million in order to add additional equipment at each one of the playgrounds, and also we've done a fencing audit. I mentioned that the other evening, and so we want to try to bring some equity across the fencing at playgrounds. Does that mean the elementaries don't get anything else? No. Later, later on, you'll see, within our capital improvement plan, Mr. Plangi has, you know, hundreds of lines that impact elementary projects. For technology, working on those device and infrastructure replacement cycles, and also continuing our work with the audio enhancement in classrooms. Furniture replacement, calling it phase two of three, we have anywhere from $30 to $40 million of additional furniture needs across the district, much like our CIP plan continues on and on. We've made it, we have done the replacement of students' desks and chairs in bond 2022. We continue to work on that, moving into the teacher desk and chairs. This would get into the libraries, the common spaces, and some of those specialty spaces, but at $15 million for this particular bond. And then, as I mentioned earlier, athletics and activities. One specific thing with Santa Fe Trail rebuild, Oregon Trail's the only middle school now with only a six-lane track. We'd like to expand that, add two lanes to make it, bring it equitable at eight lanes. Multipurpose rooms, additional outdoor fields to accommodate, as I mentioned, the expanding girl's sports. We have wrestling practices in commons, and we need to bring equity into the system. And as I mentioned, with Olathe West, the pressure on decks, we need outdoor fields, especially if girls' flag football comes to be. We're already playing Thursday, Friday, Saturdays at our, at our facilities. Safety and security, looking at weapon detection at our, for our larger events. There's some good technology now, very rapid, that can do that detection. Radio replacement, much like we keep up with our technology replacement, we need to do the same on our radios. And then, security film on windows, we've been working on our most visible buildings, putting that security film on. We want to continue doing that across the district at additional buildings. And then, finally, that capital improvement plan, $70 million, roughly five to seven years' worth of work, HVAC projects. Dr. McMullin and Mr. Plangi have been visiting with every principal, and kudos to the principals. You know, if a list had 30 things on it at one time, sometimes they go, you know, we don't need this anymore. You know, it's working fine. So, we've refined that list. Quite honestly, the list is probably at least five times $70 million, if we would try to do the entire list. But, this will get a five-to-seven year window. So, grand total, that would bring us to a recommendation of $389 million bond issue. Putting that in comparison, our last bond issue was $290.3 million. There's been incredible construction escalation. In today's dollars, you'd need $352 or $53 million in order to do that same work again. In just that three-year period, it's gone up 18.2%. So, another reason to try to identify in our district, what consolidations do we want in the way of new construction of buildings, so we don't wait three years and have another 20% increase on those costs. What's the impact going to be on our levy? I believe I demonstrated this for the board last meeting, or two meetings ago. The red is what our levy has looked like historically. Right now, we're at about 14.3 mils. If we do no other bond issues ever, the blue shows what the tax rate would do. Larynx on $389 million moves that curve over, just as I've said every time I stand before you. For a bond issue, historically, we tend to move the curve over. It never totally goes away. Conservative estimates put that at about a seven-year mark. We looked, we looked very hard at whether or not we could drop the mil, mil rate by one mil. It works on paper. I'd prefer to do that year one or two, and make that, that curve only like a five, four to five-year, just in case something went south in economic projections. But, it could be done. So, as I said, later in the agenda, if you approve this bond at $389 million, the next step is, I quickly do, fill out a questionnaire that, for the State Board of Education, get onto their agenda, and seek their approval. At that point, then the county takes over and creates the ballots, and we begin the process of election that culminates on March 3. It's a mail-in ballot. My understanding is, there will be two questions. It's unique for us. We're usually the only thing on the ballot, but the county will be having a question as well. My, again, our understanding is that the county's question will be first, ours will be second. But, by, all ballots will be due in by March 3. Questions?
Board, Mr. Boyd.
John, thank you. You mentioned the 200, 400, 600, $600 million amounts. Did the community give any feedback as it relates to how often they want to see us go out for bonds?
Thank you for asking. I meant to mention that. Yes, I did. We were trying to determine, would you rather us go out every one to three years, kind of our five-year mark that we normally do, or do you want us to go big, and we won't come ask again for 10 years? That wasn't the preference. It was more short to midterm, kind of go with your cadence that you've been, had done in the past, which is roughly that five-year mark.
Ms. Reagan. So, since we're sharing a ballot with the county, do we also share the cost of the election?
We do.
That's good. I appreciate that. Thank you for your hard work. This is a lot of meaty stuff with a lot of details and numbers, and I appreciate that the focus has been kind of on what the community showed us in the survey. So, thank you for conducting all of that work to get us to this point.
The heavy lift is really Mr. Plangi, day in and day out, walking buildings, receiving emails from principals, and just at the touch of a button, he can pretty much tell me everything that needs to happen in the district, because it's just a fluid document that he keeps.
Ms. Chohian.
Thank you. I, one of the things that just has always impressed me about our district is the forefront, foreplanning to do the right things for our buildings, for our classrooms, for our teachers. And so, I just, I mentioned this when we went over the information probably last week, and I really appreciate just thinking about that, and how you had all this information pretty much ready to go. It seemed very quick to me, but based on probably some of the conversations you have with your peers, and just knowing what, what's a priority for our district to replace and take care of. So, to me, I just really appreciate just the updates and, and knowing exactly where the money's going to go and the priorities for our district. So, thank you.
Anyone else, Board? Mr. Boyd.
Sorry, just another quick question. We did communicate in the survey, these hypothetical bond situations, that that will be a no-tax increase type of bond?
No-tax rate.
No-tax rate. Thank you.
I always tried to go on record, so I'm going to do it again. You control the rate. You do not control assessed valuation or appraisal of people's property. So, if, if your value goes up, the taxes are going to go up. If the value goes down, the taxes go down. But, you're committing that you won't move that rate above 14.3.
Thank you for that clarification. Board, anyone else? Mr. Hutchison, again, thank you.
Sure. Thanks.
Agenda item 4.05, student enrollment and demographic update. Dr. Jim McMullin, Deputy Superintendent, will present current information about the district's 25, 26 student enrollment, enrollment trends, enrollment projections, and related student demographic enrollment. Lots of numbers.
Right.
And history. Thank you.
Exactly. Yep, you bet. So, I'm a little rattled here. I can't believe John Hutchison got a round of applause after his presentation. So, I'm going to have to compose myself here, but I'll, I'll try to make it through. So, a lot of data tonight, and frankly, for the folks, both in the audience, watching online, that have been in Olathe for quite some time, some of these numbers will be surprising, because we're just entering a new era in Olathe. So, start with our current enrollment. You'll see, we are sitting at 28,140. That's down 314 students from last year. Here's the breakdown by level. You'll see, from early childhood all the way up to alternative education, and that alternative education is a little all-encompassing, including JDC, Claire Learning Center, Steppa, Project Hope, et cetera. And then, the difference in enrollment at each level. You'll see, early childhood was up on our projections, and then K through 5 is down. Middle school's up a little bit, high school's down. And then, based off our projections, and a quick kudos and shout-out to Chris Grollop, our manager of planning, you know, for a district our size of 28,000-plus students, to be able to make a projection a year out and be within 59 students is, is just remarkable. And we'll talk about some longitudinal data as well. So, going back to what did we think five years ago was going to happen? So, you'll see, the, the red line was the estimate back in '21. The blue line is the reality. So, we ultimately projected going down to 28,800. We're at 28,140, so a difference of almost 700 students. So, in looking at our, our schools by level, you'll see our largest and smallest. Obviously, our largest is Manchester Park. It's 601 students. Most people in the room, if I asked them to guess our top two largest elementaries, most of our staff could tell you it'd be Manchester and Clearwater. I asked a group of principals at a dinner we were at the other night, what's our third largest, and none of them got it. It's Mahaffey, surprisingly. And so, then on the other end of the spectrum, when we get to elementaries 33 through 36, you'll see Central, Green Springs, Northview, and then Westview. The average size of our elementaries currently is 340 students. And then, looking at years that those schools have been open, Central and Westview, both at 61 years old. And the newest of that group is Manchester Park and Clearwater at 22. Average enrollment, so you'll see where their current enrollment compares to their average enrollment. So, you'll see Manchester and Clearwater are higher than their average, as well as Mahaffey. And then, when you get to our smaller schools, you'll see they are lower than what their average has been. At the middle level, Prairie Trail's our largest middle school at 735. Frontier Trail is second. Mission is third. On the other end of the spectrum, you'll see how tight and how close our bottom three middle school enrollments are, just separated by four students. And that gives us 6,320 total middle-level students. And then, years open. Dr. Yarkovich, I believe you opened Prairie Trail 22 years ago, if I'm not mistaken. So, time goes quick. You'll see even Summit Trail, which is our newest enrollment-based middle school to be built, is already eight years old. And then, again, looking at the average enrollment, you'll see, across the board, we're down from what the average enrollment has been in each of those buildings since 2010. And then, finally, the high schools, you will see their current enrollment. All five high schools are under 2,000 students. That's the first time in a very long time that that's happened. Years open, and the reason you shouldn't have clapped for Mr. Hutchison is, Olathe South's been open 45 years, not 40 years. So, but, and you'll see North sitting there at 61. Even Olathe East, with their great presentation tonight, 34 years. Doesn't seem that long ago. And then, you look at the average enrollment since 2010, and again, you'll see, Olathe Northwest has really held steady compared to the other schools, and the others certainly have dropped enrollment over their average. So, looking at our grade distribution, and again, the trend you will see is that our, our smallest grade level is kindergarten, our largest is our seniors, and it pretty well flows that way, with the exception of our eighth-grade students. Updated data on, on students participating in free and reduced lunch. You'll see, pre-pandemic, we were around 26% for quite some time. Dropped during the pandemic. That was because, you know, free lunch and breakfast was provided to all students, and so, the applications went down since then, and that's been reinstated. We're back up, and we're right at 30% as a district. Our ethnic and racial breakdown, you'll see, again, 61% Caucasian, 20 Hispanic, 7% African-American, 4% Asian, and others. Special education services, you'll see the need that we serve in our community with our special services students, going since 2003, from 2,200 to 3,600. You also see a positive on here in terms of our gifted numbers ticking upwards. You also see a positive on here in terms of our gifted numbers ticking upwards. That's the bottom line there. And then speech and language has been holding steady the last few years. Students receiving ELL services. So again, that number continues to rise, and that's certainly a result of our diverse community. What's really been certainly challenging for not only us as a system, our staff, but for these, for students. You look at the number of students with three years or less education in the United States, sitting around 1,800. So it's a lot of kiddos. This is a new graph we put together, and so it's the graph you've seen before that just showed that incredible growth over 54 years. So 54 straight years of growth in our district from 1965 to 2019. During that time, we grew by 26,500 students over that course of time. That averages out to 491 students a year. So again, that's why that curve is so tight and so steep. Since 2019, we've lost 1,700 students in the district, or averaging about 290 a year in decline since our peak in 2019. And again, with the color coding there, you'll see that all those years, the elementary was our largest group percentage-wise. And then once we got to about 2010, it started to shift and then went down. And we'll dig into that a little more here. As a reminder, 2010 is when we had our grade realignment in Olathe. So our sixth graders moved from the elementary school to the middle school, and our ninth graders moved from our junior highs to the high schools. And again, here's just breaking down our high school enrollment. So you'll see our high schools back in 2001. Those were our smaller classes. Our kindergarten was our largest, and you'll see those have continued to grow over the years. The big jump again was in 2010 because we moved over 2,000 ninth graders from the junior highs up to the high school. You'll see the years there as well, additions to the high school when we moved ninth grade up, and then also when West opened in 2017. The middle school, it's really, they're kind of in the middle of that bubble of growth and decline. And so you'll see a fairly steady number, but they grew by 2,200 students from 2001 to 2019. And then you'll see during that period of growth, when the different buildings opened, Prairie Trail, then Mission, and then Summit, most recently in 2017. Then elementary, again, you'll see was our largest groups there early on. And you see the growth early on there. When you look at 2001 to 2009, we grew by an average of 402 students a year during that time period. It's just remarkable. And you'll see the growth that accommodated that because you're essentially growing by an elementary school every single year, even having in '04, opening two elementary schools the same year. I couldn't imagine. And eight total during that timeframe, and then certainly Canyon being our most recent elementary in 2019. And then this slide just really kind of illustrates a number that I think is very important as we look to analyze our district, our facilities, and our future. And that is, we really have the same number of elementary students today that we did back in 2001. The difference is we have built, as you saw in the previous slide, eight elementary schools since that time, and an additional 44 classroom additions, specific classrooms, which frankly comes out to about one and a half elementary schools. So same number of students, a lot more square footage, a lot more facilities. So what's been the change in enrollment? And what are the factors? And we've spoke to these, and I'll cover those here. But that is, for all those years when Olathe had that steep incline in growth, every year, our seniors were our smallest class, and our kindergarteners were our largest. And it was just rinse and repeat, year after year after year. And this next slide shows the kindergarten class versus the outgoing senior class. So you'll see to the left of the diagram, you know, the kindergarten classes at one point, back in '91, were almost 600 students larger than the senior class. That number dipped down in '98, then went back up. And you'll see it all evened out in 2016. And then since then, our seniors have been larger than our kindergarteners, all the way down to being 619 students larger. Again, another key piece is '08 is really when the birth rates started to decline in Olathe. And then that number caught up, of course, five years later. You'll see when we had that huge drop there in the kindergarten class. And of course, we're at our largest difference in school history in terms of seniors being larger than kindergartners. The major factors. Total birth rate. Average number of children per family has declined. And then the number of women aged 19 to 45 who live in Olathe has declined, even though our population has gone up. And I'll show more about that. And both of these trend with state and national data. But on this slide here, you'll see that the birth rate in 2000 in Kansas was 2.21, and today it's at 1.81. Doesn't sound like a huge difference. It is a drastic difference. And I'll share those numbers with you. So in Olathe in 2000, we had 110,000 residents. Today, we're at 164,000. It's a 49% increase in population. When you break it down by ages, you'll see the differential. But the biggest number that I'd like to point is at the bottom. People in the 20- to 44-year age has only increased by 15% when the total population has increased by 49%. What's that equate to? And this is what's really some fascinating data is, had we stayed at a 2.21 birth rate in our school district, that would have produced an additional 16,000 students. If the segment of women from 19 to 44 would have matched the population growth, so if they had continued to grow at the same rate as the city population, that'd have produced another 28,500. So again, when you really drill down in the data, the birth rate is a real factor. And again, not just in Olathe, not just in Kansas City, but in the state of Kansas and across the country. I just heard a presentation earlier this week from the school district in Bend, Oregon, and they're one of the faster-growing districts in Oregon, but their district is declining. And so this is certainly affecting folks all over. The other piece is the residential development comparison. In Olathe, for years during that steep incline, was the place to go build a new home, have a neighborhood elementary school, raise your family. They get a great education. You'll see that the development has gotten extremely expensive and is rather built out. And so from '01 to '24, you'll see the difference in single-family homes, duplexes, five-plus-unit apartments, et cetera. So it's a 77% change from '01 to '24. And this graph here shows our district map. And the number that's interesting here is that we had five elementary school attendance areas that had over 100 dwellings built, and 12 attendance areas with zero to five. Fast forward to 2024, only one elementary school had over 100 built, 28 with zero to five. So again, it just shows the built-out phase of our district. And then when you look at home prices in our district, has really had a huge impact on new families coming in. So here's some data just on what subdivisions looked like during that growth and what they look like now. So we used to get, in Regency Place, for example, .71 students per home. That number now is .33, a difference of negative 77. There's a couple other examples there with the estates of Ashton and Brookfield. Cohort growth is the positive piece of this presentation in terms of people aren't leaving our district once they're here. And I think that's a really important message for everyone. And that's due to our staff, our climate in our buildings, and frankly, the city of Olathe and the great place that it is. But you'll see our cohorts, while they are smaller, they do grow. It's a minimal growth, but you'll see anywhere from, you know, 42 students down to three students. We had a few grade levels where we were on the negative side. But overall, that one-year change was a positive 2.09 from one year to the next. So again, really believe our community loves our schools, and once they're here, they stay. So the impact on our schools, and this data is interesting. So these are elementary schools, looking at them in 2001 versus this year. In '01, '02, we had 15 elementary schools over 450 students. And then today, this year, we have 24 elementary schools below 350 students. At the middle level, in 2012, eight middle schools were larger than 650 students. And this year, we have seven middle schools smaller than 650 students. So again, you'll see that decline. Looking at the future, nine-year enrollment estimate, looking out, we're looking, we're projecting a decrease of 2,300 over the next nine years, putting us 25,700 students. And then you can see the breakdown there by grade level. So some conclusions, and the reality is, we're just entering a new era in Olathe where we are experiencing declining enrollment. There's been districts in our area that have addressed this challenge before us, and now it's upon us. And so what we will do is continue to monitor our enrollment numbers, refine our projections. And really, the process has started of determining what rightsizing looks like in our district in terms of making sure we have the right number of educational learning spaces by level for the number of students we have and we are projected to have moving forward. And so we will continue to be very transparent and open about this as we go through it. But it's just the reality that we are dealing with now in Olathe. So that being said, I think we have time for one question.
Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. McMillan. Can you speak to, and you might need some help from Mr. Hutchinson, but you mentioned being open and transparent, right? This idea that we have declining enrollment, but we are asking or going to ask for a $389 million bond. Can you speak to the idea of how those two things square with each other?
Yeah, it's a great question. And the reality is, is our community, since the beginning of time, has been extremely supportive of bond referendums, especially as you looked in those years in the, you know, 2000s to 2015 about was our really peak growth time. And the reality is, our community's been very supportive through bond referendums with growth. But the reality is, we have a lot of buildings, a lot of square footage to take care of. And much like owning a home, you know, to continue to keep it as nice as possible. Obviously, you've got to take care of your roof and your air conditioner and doors and windows and paint and carpet and all those things. And so for us, it's an obligation. The community has made a great investment in our school district and in our facilities. And we feel, as stewards, it's our responsibility to make sure we keep these spaces equitable and as good as possible for the future students.
Mr. Hutchinson, would you maybe add that, it wasn't in tonight's presentation, but it was in an earlier one, just comparing maybe adjacent school districts and why they're not needing to go out for bonds as frequently as we do?
Sure.
Clarify that.
The reason they don't, they're not as dependent is because they can generate more capital outlay. We're all, there's a statutory max of eight mills. All the Johnson County districts are at that eight mills. But our neighbors can generate $12, $14 million more with their eight mills because of their tax base is higher, and it's higher per pupil than ours is as well. And another thing I presented earlier that kind of piggybacks on what Dr. McMullin said is, had we just made, if we could have kept those seats filled across those eight or nine buildings, it's about $22 million of state aid we haven't been getting. That is not, had we just kept the same birth rates, just the seats we had filled before in those buildings. But we're not generating it, but we're still running the same system.
Thank you. Ms. Reagan.
That's a lot of numbers, Dr. McMullin, and I appreciate you sharing them with us. It's an interesting overlap. You see the affordable housing issue and the affordability of, you know, providing for a family changing drastically. I really appreciated you pointing out the kindergarten enrollment following the 2008 financial crisis. And I mean, I'm in that age bracket where I'm seeing friends choosing to, you know, stop growing their families, and because you have kids who are already living, breathing, who you've got to think forward and think ahead. I do want to reiterate that, I love how you talked about the investment. The children who benefited from the rapid growth of Olathe, having new buildings, having updated all of that because we were growing so fast, the children today also are deserving of the keeping pace with innovation, keeping pace with, you know, what students are needing to learn and thrive in a world today. So I just, kids are kids, and simply because they're existing in a district that isn't on this crazy upward trajectory, 25,000 kids in nine years is still 25,000 kids. And I want us all to make sure we keep that top of mind. But it's, I've had people ask, you know, the conversation in the planning going forward of rightsizing, that's going to be something that we have an ongoing discussion with the community, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And I do want to say that, you know, we have been analyzing this for quite some time and through our boundary study group. And the one piece of caution I'll throw out there is, you know, while we know we need to reduce our elementary footprint, it's not going to be a process where you look at the bottom five lowest enrollment, and those are your schools. That's not how this will work. It will certainly be different areas of the district to where we can make the most use of our facilities and square footage and certainly continue to serve students to their best ability.
Mr. Babbitt.
I'd like to thank, I believe, Chris Grollop for doing these great maps and numbers and just doing these projections for us. It really helps.
You don't think I put those together?
What year did Olathe North open, gentlemen?
'65.
Okay. I knew you would know, so I wanted to make you feel better about yourself. The only, the other question I had was for John. I know earlier this year, we talked about we lost some state aid because, is it because our population got too big? Or our enrollment got too big? Does this potentially affect that in the future of being able to get that aid again?
No, it has to do with our average home price compared to the average home price across the state.
That's definitely not going down.
We don't look as poor on paper because of the escalation of our home price. We used to receive state aid because of that. It was equalized.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. McMullin, I have a question about a number in the presentation, Slide 23, the residential development. And I'm trying to wrap my head around a decrease in five-plus-unit apartments when everywhere I drive in Olathe, I see new apartment buildings.
Right, yeah.
Can you clarify that for us?
So some of that is, there has been a lot built in the last five years. But some of these complexes that we see have been open for three years that we think are maybe brand-new. So there's that piece. The other piece is, the growth has definitely slowed down since '22. And that's when the interest rates for these type of projects were hovering around zero and then spiked up to 4%, 5%. And the reality is, if you're building a $50 million large apartment complex, like the one on College and Ridgeview, you know, you could be looking at $2 million in interest, you know, as you're constructing it. So those So those projects take a long time to build, so you see them. They're always in pretty high-profile, highly-traveled areas, whether it's close to the interstate or close to major roads. But it certainly has gone down, even though we see some newer complexes out there.
Okay. Thank you.
What's interesting there is the number of duplexes have gone up. And if you noticed that, but so many of those are maintenance-provided, which obviously are not producing students in Olathe.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Johann.
You know, I think we've talked about it a little bit. So we, you know, with the decline in students and the changes in our buildings, would we also need to look at the employees that we have? And what does that look like over the years? And we have a plan for them as well?
Yeah, you know, the positive is, we, you know, we're such a large system from an employee standpoint. We have always been able to, you know, make adjustments with attrition, natural retirements and folks resigning and moving and staying home with kids and all those things. And so don't anticipate, as we move forward, there being an issue where we get into a reduction in force, involuntary reduction in force. I mean, we certainly have policies in place for that, but I don't, I think with a methodical plan and a spaced-out plan, I think, you know, that can all be handled through attrition.
Thank you. I didn't say thank you.
Sure. You're good.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. McMullin, thank you.
You bet.
At this time, we will have public comments. Ms. Johann.
Good evening. At each regular board meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane that is related to the business as board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's YouTube channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city, and state and relationship to the district.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Thomas Greger.
So I'm Thomas Greger. I have one son in the district at Rome Elementary. And before I start, since I have five minutes, I'd say that was some amazing data, very interesting to me. So, members of the board, a month ago, our district was thrust into the national spotlight because some staff at Arbor Creek wore shirts emblazoned with the word "freedom." The shirts were worn in the wake of Charlie Kirk's assassination. The principal told those staff members to, quote, "hold off on wearing the shirt again." At the time of the incident, it was unclear what the staff had been told, which allowed social media to run rampant with leaked communications. The district's slow response and lack of transparency prolonged and aggravated the issue. The one-word message "freedom" should not have been inflammatory. Freedom is core American value. However, some parents considered it so. Although the shirts bore design that Mr. Kirk wore when he was assassinated and is sold by his organization, Turning Point USA, define as conservative message, the emblem is benign. Honestly, it is relatively easy to find words, logos, or patterns on staff clothing or accessories that support a myriad of positions and causes, many arguably controversial and with similar ties to interest groups across the political spectrum. It is my current understanding that staff can wear what they wish, so long as it's not in direct support of a candidate or ballot proposition. Clearly, that guidance is unwritten or unclear, based on the initial action in this matter and long deliberation of the district to rectify. In light of the Arbor Creek incident, it is clear that current policy, written or unwritten, is insufficient. In Dr. Yeager's letter to Arbor Creek parents and shared local media, it stated, quote, "We recognize our students are impressionable and see our staff as role models, thus recognize that school environment should remain politically neutral with a focus on student learning," end quote. With this, I strongly concur. Wearing slogans or symbols that are associated with particular political issues and social movements can inhibit or suppress student expression. What student would write a research position paper that contradicts a position their teacher clearly supports without concern for his or her grade? Who would speak up in a classroom discussion with a viewpoint that contradicts their teacher's demonstrated opinion? Students ought not be intimidated by their teachers profess political sentiments. Thus, I propose the following. The district should set a clear staff dress policy. The policy should ban the wear of clothing and other wardrobe paraphernalia that contain words, flags, symbols, or even patterns that convey a message, basically business casual. Further, our classrooms should not contain banners other than those related to our curriculum, and schools should only display the U.S. flag and the flags of the state of Kansas, the state of Olathe, and of the school. Reasonable exceptions should be made, of course, to this code for spirit days, religious observance, and for official district-approved clothing, for example, school or district logo shirts, band shirts, et cetera. The district is well within its rights as an employer to set and maintain the dress code during the school day and in official district functions. Brief review of case law on public employee speech, I believe bears this out. In conclusion, our classrooms are places of learning and not the place for political sloganeering or staff-issue advocacy. Such speech is detrimental to the learning environment and chilling to the students within the classroom who differ with teacher opinion. A simple change in dress code will ensure a more politically-neutral educational environment, avoid distractions, and improve our classroom learning. Thank you for listening to our proposal.
Thank you very much. Our second speaker tonight is Nick Crayley.
I guess Brad didn't want me, oh, never mind. I'm just kidding. Hi, everybody. Congratulations to Mr. Kuhn, Ms. Steele, and Ms. Johann for your success at the polls this week. That's awesome. I also really want to start this comment off with thanking Heather Schoonover. Obviously, the reduction in staff benefits is something that's affecting all of us. I was really happy to see Dr. Yeager send out information about that. Community development is literally like right beneath my classroom if you come to Mill Creek. And between Heather and Cindy, I just, it's like some of the most amazing work that's happening in our district. So I'm just really glad that we have that right now and that they're working very hard, I know, to like meet the needs of our families that are not being met by the institutions that are supposed to be meeting them. So there's that. And then I also want to thank Dr. McMullin, because that was a really cool presentation, and I love demographic data. So that was directed at staff, so I apologize for that. So the thing I want to talk about a little bit tonight, though, is my role has changed a little bit, and I'm supporting our teachers using Edgenuity for credit recovery. And it's reinforced some things that I've experienced over the last, over a decade that I've been teaching, which is that like, I think there was a window of time where technological literacy amongst students like was like existing and flourishing and for reasons totally outside of the control of a lot of people in this school district right now, I think that we've really seen that diminish. And I would ask, I think most of you have kids or grandkids, I think that you will observe that a lot of the sort of things that we think of as making our lives easier, quality of life improvements, things like password managers on our phones, and stuff like being able to like save notes or like having phones saved in phone books and things like that, are actually, I think, creating a frictionless environment that is making it more difficult and our students less resilient in the classroom. I don't think that that's something that anybody here wants to have happen, and I'm not trying to say this to impugn our absolutely phenomenal staff that are working really hard on digital literacy, but I will say that as a teacher, it is really difficult for me to have a student do activities that are using state-of-the-art technology when sometimes they don't necessarily come with the sort of resiliency that can come with technological issues. We've all had problems where our router doesn't work or our computer won't like respond or something like that. And I think that what we've seen with the advent of smartphones is that some of this stuff has become so easy that it is just another way in which we can, kids are encouraged to sort of give up. I have one anecdote that I think is really telling, which is a student who was working very hard on her resume, that she was doing a phenomenal job on, needed to email it to a teacher, realized that the teacher's email was not like auto-populating in her Gmail field, so she went back out and she, we were on a desktop computer, saw an email, and took a picture of it with her phone. Now, kudos to her for figuring out a way to like get the email that she needed onto the screen that she wasn't on. But she could have been able to copy and paste it. And I think that the fact that we're not necessarily always using the devices that, you know, like we're using things like smartphones and tablets and not necessarily always desktop computers, and they might be between different operating systems, this is all a lot of really technical stuff to say that like, if we're preparing our kids for the 21st century, I think that there's a lot of structural stuff going on that is like making that really difficult. And I will say that like, bringing it back to education, it's making it really difficult for the teachers, because I would like to teach English and social studies, I would not like to teach how to remember a password that has, is alphanumeric, has a symbol. And our kids are doing the best, but especially from an accessibility standpoint, that can be really challenging for those of them that are neurodiverse. I'm only bringing this because I think that it's something that can get lost if you're not in the classroom seeing it every single day, and if you're not working in particular with some of those marginalized population like I am. And I'm not saying that like that's anything that anybody here is doing wrong, but we're all problem solvers here, and I just want us to sort of keep it front of mind as we're thinking about legislative priorities. Things like, you know, cell phone use and the availability in the classroom, something to consider. Or alternatively, like, you know, like technological adoption and things like this. I don't have like a solution, and I think everybody here is working really hard to solve it, but I did kind of want to bring up something that I don't see get talked about a whole lot. And it just so happens that Dr. Reeves is presiding over this, as I'm sure he's probably like, "Well, Learning Services is trying." And I know that, but like, I don't know, it's just been on my mind. And so I was like, I need a topic, because Julie told me I have to talk, and so I'm here, and I wanted to share that. So thank you guys tonight.[1354.51][1354.51](Laughter)
Mr. Crayley, as always, we appreciate your thoughts. Thank you. And that is the last speaker this evening. Board, we will move to action consent items, and I would welcome a motion to approve Items 6.01 to 6.09.
I move to approve action consent items 6.01 to 6.09.
Second. Motion by Ms. Reagan, second by Ms. Johann. Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Johann?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. Action bids, contracts, and agreements, Items 7.01 to 7.06. Is there a motion?
I move to approve action items 7.01 to 7.06 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Babbitt, second by Mr. Kuhn. Ms. Johann?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. The next two action items are related to presentations that we have had either this evening or recently. Item 8.01, the resolution authorizing and calling for, of a bond election. Before I take a motion, is there any further discussion related to that? Ms. Reagan?
I just wanted to reemphasize, I know some of the phrases we use when we talk about bonds, mill levy, capital outlay, those kinds of things. The ordinary individual doesn't think about those words very much, but, and I've said this in previous comments, but it is worth repeating. Olathe is a community dominated by residential property, which is why a lot of us have chosen to live here and purchase a residence here. And residential property generates 11.5% into the tax collection that is happening, 11.5%. Commercial and industrial is 25%, and agriculture is 30%. So 11.5% of your home value is factored into all those things, and that, from there, gets a little over my pay grade as a person who taught English and not math. But I just want to emphasize, our neighboring communities have a bigger commercial and industrial tax base. And so we, as a residence-dominated community, which again, is something a lot of us very much love, that's why we have, you know, the neighborhood schools we've had and all the parks we have in Olathe and, you know, centers of commerce and not mini-malls everywhere. But those things are important to keep in mind, that it's not, I think sometimes when we hear larger tax base, they hear, "Well, they have bigger homes than we do." We have more homes. And so that is just something I want the people of Olathe to realize. And so being bond-dependent is actually part of what makes our community a special place, because we have a dominance of neighborhoods. And so I am going to be voting to call for a bond, and I believe that the future of our community, the children of the Olathe Public School District, deserve to have that considered by the voting public in Olathe.
Any other comments or discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of a bond election in Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, Olathe, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the district the question of issuing general obligation bonds of the district in the amount of $389 million, authorizing the application to the State Board of Education, and for capital improvement state aid, and providing for the giving of notice of said bond election.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Ms. Reagan. Ms. Beam. Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Johann?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. Before we go to the next one, I, again, I know we've said a lot of thank yous, but this is a really important decision that we've just made, and I appreciate Dr. McMullin and Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. Pilonji and all of those individuals who have been a part of providing the board such important and clear and accurate communications and details to make this decision, and to our community for responding to the survey to help provide additional guidance in this next step for Olathe Public Schools. So. Item 8.02, Westview Elementary Boundary Recommendation. Again, board, this is a topic we've had a lot of information provided and discussions, both in these meetings and then in our smaller three-by meetings. Is there any other discussion or comments that anyone would like to make before we move to a motion? Ms. Steele.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Yurkovich. I just wanted to kind of mention, it's the process, but it's also, the part that makes it difficult is staff can present plans, but they cannot do action until we take action tonight. So it kind of puts all of us in, Dr. Seuss calls it, the waiting place, right? Westview is there, our community is in the waiting place, staff is in the waiting place, and now we've invited Rolling Ridge into the waiting place with us. And so what happens there without answers and concrete details is more questions than answers, and that is also creates more angst. So I guess what I want to say about that is, staff I know has ideas and plans, and they can't they can't speak to all of that or act on that until we make this decision tonight. And what I would also ask of staff is, the best plan going forward that has been recommended is moving Westview students to Rolling Ridge next school year. And given that, with all the understanding and reasoning behind that, what I'd like to ask of Dr. Harrison, and Dr. McMullin, and the transition team, and I know this is going to happen, but I'd like to ask for it, you know, publicly, is that there's a commitment to the pre-work that's going to happen at Rolling Ridge, shoring up that foundation, and making sure we really understand what their needs are before, during, and after this big transition. We will have time to take care of Westview, and we have said that over and over here. But I think the work that needs to happen, starting tonight, if we approve this, is that we take a look at Rolling Ridge and what that foundation is, and what that foundation needs. And again, I know a lot of that you haven't been able to do, because we haven't made this decision. So as we all kind of exit the waiting room in this icky place of people not having answers to many, many questions, I think that's one thing I want to make sure is, is front of mind for the transition team, and I know it will be. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, I would entertain a motion for 8.02. Ms. Johann?
Sure. I move to approve the boundary change, which moves Westview Elementary resident students to Rolling Ridge Elementary for the 2026-2027 school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Johann, second by Ms. Reagan. Ms. Beam?
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steel?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 8.03, Appointment of Head Start Policy Council. If that looks familiar, it's because we did this once earlier this year. Ms. Johann was appointed to fill that position. She also, and if you don't mind me saying, started a new job. And there is a conflict between the meeting times for Head Start Policy Council and a meeting she is required to attend for her employment. Julie Steel and I have agreed to kind of split that position and attend those meetings. So Board, we need a motion to change that appointment to Julie Steel and myself.
Thank you.
I move to appoint Dr. Stacy Yurkovich and Ms. Julie Steel to the Head Start Policy Council for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Johann, second by Ms. Reagan.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steel?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Future action items, and as you can see, there is a long list, so please take time to read through those and be prepared for December. Written information, again, we have reports from the November Head Start Director's Report, the bond issue, and Learning Services November Report. Were there any comments related to any of those?
I just have a couple, is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. So just a couple. I would like to ask for, I'm super excited about our, I don't read, OPSEC, our innovation campus and the progress there, and especially the progress being made for our esports arena. So I would like to ask maybe next month if Mr. Pelangi could kind of speak to that, because it's super exciting that we will be holding the first-ever esports championship in January. So I think they'll be a little further along, and so if we could add that to the agenda in December, that would be wonderful. I'd love to hear more about it. And then from the Learning Services Written Report, I am so excited about Canvas. As a parent who, with kid number four, is constantly trying to provide some scaffolding, it is so difficult. I am trying to manage, I don't know, I think there's four different places we have to go to figure out, and she'll put me in the spin zone, so I need to know. Because do you have homework is always, it's already done, and we need to look at it together. And that, in high school, is going to four different places to do that, so I don't know if our parental community understands, but this is going to be an amazing thing. I also recognize that educators in the background are doing a lot of work to transfer their information, and this mom appreciates it, and I know our community well. So I'm super excited about Canvas. And then also wanted to just mention, I also am so pleased that Moral Courage was something that our district participated in, I don't know, two years-ish ago about, and it's, there are still things happening that are touchpoints for our educators within that Moral Courage, what do I want to say, Moral Courage program. It's how to have difficult conversations with people, and couldn't we all use that? And so I'm really pleased to see that Moral Courage wasn't a one-and-done presentation. It's something that's still trickling through our system, and educators are able to take advantage of more training in that area. So, anyway, that's all I had on written, and thank you for that, Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes, thank you. Okay, topics for discussion, Board. Oh, sorry, your light didn't come on, Will. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So shoot, I just lost my notes. First, I'd like to talk about the spin zone. It's good to know that's still going, my fifth grader just started it, so he definitely doesn't have homework any night.
Any night, yeah.
I'd like to give congratulations to Becky, Rob, and Julie on their wins on Tuesday night. Very exciting, really excited to keep working with all of you. I went to the district math wings competition on Tuesday night, and was, as always, blown away at the intelligence of these young fourth and fifth graders to be able to compete with one another on these really hard math questions, and I'm just so excited that Olathe embraces and allows them to have this opportunity to compete against each other in such a great topic. Two really, two things really stood out to me. One team had a shirt that had the, the front of it said the square root of 4,489, and then on the back it had 67.
It's not 67, it's 67.
And on that same note, they did have one question where the answer to the question was 67. And it took them a solid two or three minutes to calm the room down after getting the answer. I wanted to give a shout out to our technology and econ team, and communications team about the new district website. It's beautiful, I really am excited about what a change, what an enhancement it's been to the district as a whole. I know it's still a work in progress, but it's such a huge step up, and I'm really excited about it. Back to the election real quick, I just wanted to point out, from every local election, how important the local elections are, and how different they are from federal, state and federal elections. Every one that I saw had, win or lose, the announcements that were coming out were about supporting the community and supporting the school districts, or the cities that they worked for, or the Johnson County Community College. It was just, win or lose, everybody had a, let's move forward together attitude, and it was really exciting. And then I went to the first Culinary Arts Dinner at Olathe North, and one thing that really, really stood out from this, other than the incredible food every time, was we looked around and we noticed that there was several American Sign Language interpreters walking around, and didn't think anything of it. And then when the chefs came over to speak to us, they pointed out that they had, this year they have five students from the Kansas School of the Deaf taking part in the program this year. And it's the first time they've had any since 2012, and the most they've ever had. And it was really interesting to watch the Olathe North students interact with the students, students from the School of the Deaf, because the students didn't know sign language, but they were, in speaking to the chefs, they said they were quickly learning key terms, and that the, they were just learning to work together, and it was just really a testament to the diversity of Olathe. And it's just amazing to see these kids work together and not think a second thing about it, and how quickly they're able to adapt and work together. And I look forward to having four more meals through the rest of the year. Thanks.
Mr. Boyd?
Thank you. As we talk about rightsizing our district, yesterday I attended the Strategic Planning Long Range Committee meeting, and while that name doesn't sound very...
Sexy?
Sex, I was hesitating about the word. You felt a pause, didn't you?
I...
But no, I left that meeting feeling, my heart was very, very full, because the level of intention that our educators showed up with, our district leader showed up with, it was incredible. We, there was folks in a room advocating for parents, folks in a room advocating for students, advocating for teachers, advocating for our classified staff and certified staff. I mean, the conversation was really heartwarming, and it made me proud that all four of my kids get to experience this district, and I am blessed to be sitting up here and just lend my voice to those conversations.
Thank you. Ms. Steel?
So I just want to say tonight, wow and thank you to the Olathe community, and I do feel an inner glow tonight, because I am so thankful to continue serving in this role for this district that I love and believe in so very much. I'm looking forward to another four years of making a difference for students, and for parents, and for educators, and there is never a shortage of work to be done here in this space, and I am here for it. Because I do not thank my family enough, I owe them some thank you, so if you'll bear with me. When you serve in a role like this, and when you run a campaign concurrently, the whole family is touched, and that is not always in the best way, which they occasionally let me know about. But I am so thankful to them for allowing me to do this, and for being by my side. My dad, who is a longtime civil servant in this community, and my mom, who is a stronghold, were so helpful to me during this, these last, what, April? How many other months is that? Six, seven months? It seemed like two years. To my brother-in-law, who I often say to him, "You got me into this, so you are going to help with this campaign," and to my sister, who is my little sister, but I look up to her so much. To my immediate family, my kids. Caroline, you checked in on me endlessly throughout the campaign, even in all the busyness of your life. And Beau, you checked in on me at about 9:00 PM on election night, so I do appreciate that. I say that with my tongue in cheek, he is busy doing doctor things, and I understand that. To Meg and Kate, who lived the daily aspects of this campaign, Maggie, you are the sweetest encourager I could ever have asked for. And Kate, it can be really hard when of your siblings, you're the one that's in high school, when your mom is on the school board, and she passes a cell phone policy. And it's been a hard go lately, but you know I love you, and I am so thankful to be your mom. And nevertheless, that my husband sent me the most beautiful flowers on Election Day, and I should have been sending that man flowers. He gets it, he gets the highs, he gets the lows, and he gets the rock bottom. So, Tim, thank you. So, family, here's to four more years of missing some dinners, and to you waiting in the car for me at every school event, because I'm the last one to get there. But also, to four more years of seeing your mom and your wife be so fulfilled to do this work. So to everyone, thank you, I am very grateful, and I don't take one single bit of this for granted. Thanks.
Ms. Reagan?
So on the note of the election, I, you know, our district is going through change, right? We keep saying it's the next new era of Olathe Public Schools. And when going through this level of change, I am so grateful for the consistency of leadership on this board, and experience, and a diversity of opinions. And so I was very excited for our community on Tuesday night. I also want to say, if you look at the value that Olathe voters, and that includes parts of Overland Park and Lenexa, who send their children to our schools, there is a very concerted dedication to public education. There's a consistency of supporting our schools at the ballot box. And I just want people to see the through line from our local elections to our state legislative elections in the coming year. They are connected. And the clear support that you, as a community, have given our board to set the vision, adopt the policies, make the hard decisions, that value needs to translate to the people who represent us at the State House. And if you're sick of hearing about it from me in this seat, get ready, because I'm going to keep talking about it. I also want to say that something like American Education Week is very centering, and it reminds us of how important our public schools are. And it's an interesting coupling with the uncertainty we're just dealing with on the regular, that we're still appreciating these recognitions that have held us steady. And so as we embark on different changes, conversations that we're going to be having about things coming forward, centering ourselves on our commitment to this district is something that I hope we can all do. I've also, just in watching different conflicts around our community and whatnot, although we've, the school board is boring again, which is great, not in a bad way, in a good way, I will say that when I'm trying to have conversations, and trying to do my utmost to listen, I, it is my hope that that is a shared experience, that we are all trying to listen to each other. And the best way forward is together, and that means that we will make hard choices, and we hope that the trust you've instilled in us, and especially in the ones you've just re-elected to sit up here, holds through the hard times. The port in the storm is that Olathe Public Schools is a wonderful place, system, institution, pillar of our community, and we all up here are committed to making sure that it stays the magnet for growth, and the beacon for the children of our city. So, that's what I've got.
I missed the button.
Becky?
Thank you. Sometimes I just want to give you a little here, here. Good job. Well, I just would like to go ahead and say thank you again for voters showing up on Tuesday night. I was unopposed, but I was still happy to be on the ballot, and still, it was really a neat moment to take my daughter with me Tuesday morning to the polls, and have her stand next to me. I said, "That's my name," you know, right there. And so just a really neat experience, and one I'm really grateful to share with her. And she says, "Well, you'll just have to do it again." I said, "Okay, okay, well, we'll talk about that." But, you know, one of the things that made me really excited about it was, you know, just some of the difficult things that we have to do in the next four years, in the next however many years, as we go through changes in our city, our state, our country. And I feel confident with this group right here, that I can talk to you, and we can discuss it, and we can come to a consensus to take care of our community. So thank you for continuing to serve with me also. A couple of things, just in the last month that I attended, I always, always, always appreciate attending our Olathe Public School Foundation Women's Giving Circle event. What a cup filler, women come together, just give a little bit of money a couple times Women come together, just give a little bit of money a couple of times a year and can give grants to really deserving teachers and programs within our district. And I think we gave a little over $22,000 out to three different groups. And so what an, what an amazing thing. I believe we were also given food from the culinary students from OATC also. So that was a neat experience. And then I just, I really do appreciate all the things that our, our schools offer our children in different ways and capacity. And my daughter still participates in orchestra and so she got to play in the spectacular orchestra concert right before Halloween. And it was just a really neat experience. I love that they can express themselves in different ways. And she's excited to try out for jazz band now. So anyway, really just want to say thank you to everybody for allowing me to continue to serve here with you all and I hope you have a wonderful night.
I have kind of several things and, and connected, but a little bit random. The first is a thank you to Becky Joanne. As you may recall, last year, the board initiated a process where one of our members attends professional counsel as an observer. And Robert Kuhn served in that capacity last year and Becky has volunteered to do that. So Becky Joanne will be a part of, of those meetings, beginning after the first of the year and, and then as we come to agreement and settle before staff go home again this year. Is there pressure to do that? Yeah. Conversation about voting. I had the opportunity to serve as an election worker Tuesday at a poll here in Olathe. And I observed a situation that was, was extremely heartwarming to me. It was near the time that polls were going to close and a family came in, a mom and a dad with two little boys, which is, I think, as you talked about, taking your daughter with you, so important that kids are seeing their parents vote. But they had gone to one more step in that Johns Kennedy Elections provides a, a child's ballot, a future voter's ballot, where they can, you know, choose whether they like pizza or chocolate chip cookies or, or whatever. And so each of the, the boys had that ballot. And one was a little bit older and, and a better reader. And so he's reading it to his younger brother and, and they're marking their ballots at, at the same time their parents are, are marking their ballots. And then there's a special bag that we put the, the future voter's ballots into. But I just, again, the importance of voting, of being engaged, of exercising the right that we have as United States citizens and to model that for students. It had been a very long day in, in, you know, in the event you don't know, election workers arrive at the site at 6:00 AM. The polls close at 7:00, but then there's a process to shut everything down. So it's, it's about 8:00. And because of the security, you don't leave the site during those hours. So it, it really kind of fulfilled a, a long day and, and so important. A couple of other things, talking about the Olathe Public School Foundation and Women's Giving Circle, the foundation, as you know, also hosts, sponsors classroom grants and there's a committee that reviews that and awards monies. And today was the surprise prize patrol where a group of people from the foundation and that committee go to, it's oftentimes almost every school to deliver the big checks and you can see it on social media. And that event was today. And so you can see the schools and the variety and I, I do want to thank the, the educators who take time to apply for those grants because we recognize it's one more thing for you to do, but the funds are there and they are for you and for your students. And the range of types of things that are funded, you know, from, from early childhood to high school is, is extremely, a lot of variety. I see Yanji Paras back there, she was part of the, the surprise team today as well. So again, thanks to the foundation for all that they do for the students and staff of Olathe. Another presentation that I want to draw attention to from the site council, Dr. Sieg, and related to long-term, long-range planning. And Brad has already mentioned the meeting last night and Julie and I had the opportunity to be there as well and Dr. Reeves. And it, I, I would describe it the same, Brad. And I've, I've thought because we, the presentation that was provided to site council and we'd seen with the four, what are they called?
Vision priorities.
Vision priorities. We are spending time further defining those. And so we spent quite a bit of time talking about academic excellence and what does that look like and, and what does that mean? And student experience as a part of that. And I think about the 19 semi-merit finalists who were here tonight from Olathe schools across all five high schools. I, I think that is a, a great example of academic excellence and the rigor and the opportunities that they've had. I, the Olathe East presentation tonight, those students and has been mentioned, the way that they presented, carried themselves, being as articulate with humor and knowledge about their school and passion for, for a variety of activities and academics. And then I have had a couple of opportunities this last week to spend time on two different occasions with our future educator academy students. Some juniors last week and then, I guess it was just yesterday, senior students who are nearing that time where they are making a decision as to where to go to school and exactly where they want to end up as a teacher in a classroom. And I, I really encouraged them not to limit themselves, to, to explore all levels of education and different roles that are required in education because I said, you never know what opportunities are, are going to come your way. And so again, the culinary students and the opportunity and service that they provide, Olathe Public Schools have for decades, as was demonstrated tonight, grown and provided more and more for our students. And the third presentation at site council with Dr. Waters and Kelly Tynes and Justin Howe related to some change in middle school course offerings. As we know, not all change is welcomed in a happy way from the very beginning. But one of the benefits of being in Olathe schools, one of the examples that we set for other school districts in the region and the state is that we look to the future and what can we best provide for our students. And not a small number of students, but all 28,180. And the decisions that we make, we are constantly looking through that lens. I would ask, just as we have through our time looking at Westview and decisions made toward repurposing and changing boundaries, to allow the systems that we have put into place to work. Provide time to look at the change. Once decisions are made surrounding the change, then we can get into the details, as Ms. Steele mentioned tonight, whether it's a change that you agree with or not as a community. We, the seven people here and our, our senior leadership and our teaching staff and support staff, we're looking at your child every day and we're, we are doing what we can to provide opportunity for, for your, your children and your student and prepare them for their future because their future is our future. So that is our my comments tonight. Dr. Reeves?
Well, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to sit up here. I would say that I was a little, it was a little nerve wracking. I'm glad, some of you are probably wondering, does he talk? I do talk. Dr. Jaeger is big shoes to fill and I know that because I followed him twice in his job and so I know how, how big a job that is. So thanks for the opportunity to do it. I think when we think about kind of some of the things that have been mentioned tonight and kind of looking back over the last couple of weeks, there have been several things, big things that have happened in our system. And I thought I would just kind of add a little bit to some of those things. One of them was my opportunity to greet some German exchange students about a week and a half ago, who spent about two weeks in Olathe from a sister city in, and I'm probably going to butcher this, Pensburg, Germany, where they come over and spend about a little less than two weeks kind of exploring our schools, experiencing life through their host families that they stay with. They have the opportunity to kind of get to explore our community, experience the culture, not just Olathe, but the greater Kansas City area. We've been doing that with this school for about 12 years and every other year they come here and then on the off years we go there. So it's a great opportunity for our students to, to get to go do that and it was, it was fun to spend some time with them. So school systems are very different in Germany than they are here and it was great to kind of hear their insight on what was, what was different and what they liked about our school system. Mentioned, mentioned site council and we had three great presentations on the bond, strategic plan, and then also our middle school electives. And we'll be sending more information out about those, but I'd like to thank the people that put those presentations together. They gave us, gave us great information, but also thank the staff and the community for their engagement. It was well attended and, and that's always important, especially when, when we're looking at making big decisions in our system. Also, you know, congratulations to our board members who were reelected. Grateful to have the opportunity to continue to have this board intact and work together and collaborate with, with everybody. And then the other thing that I would say is we recognized our communications team, but we rolled out our district website, which was a huge lift and a long time in the making and it looks absolutely fantastic. There are a few of us that are like, oh my gosh, where is this now? I gotta, so I'm exploring the website, but it is, it really is fantastic. You guys did a great job, so. And then we also, over the last couple of weeks or several, several weeks, have had some additional fall state champs. And so Olathe North won their fifth state title in gymnastics with multiple gymnasts across the district placing individually. Olathe Northwest won their second state title in girls tennis. And then four of our football teams are still left in the running as we close out the football season, the high school football season. But not to be unmatched, our high schools also, all of our high schools were named Performing Arts Schools of Excellence by CACIA, which is a great distinction and I think speaks volumes about the art program opportunities that we provide our students so that we have something for every student in our district. So it really illustrates the high level for which our students perform and really is a celebration for our school and our, and our community. Looking at kind of the next couple of weeks, we've heard about American Education Week and just like to say that we're grateful for the opportunity and the collaboration that we have, not only with our teachers and our support staff and our administrators, but the dedication and the commitment that they bring to education and the excellence that they bring every day. The job is not the same as it was when I started 25-plus years ago, but we still have people that show up every day and put their heart and soul into what they do for kids and for families. Additionally, Veterans Day is just around the corner and so we will have lots of schools that will take an opportunity to acknowledge our veterans, those that are, have served and are currently serving. And we thank those folks for their courage and leadership to serve our country and also being a role model for the qualities that we hope to see in our own students. Thank you for your service and the powerful example you set for the young people in Olathe. The Olathe Public Schools Foundation is next week and Dr. Jaeger will share his State of the District address. That's always a great event to see the community come together and really support our schools. We are, we have an incredible foundation that provides a lot of support to our system and makes a lot of things possible. And then I think the last thing I would just say is that lots of thanks tonight, but you know, November is kind of a month of gratitude and there's always a lot to celebrate in Olathe. It's a great school district. It's the place we raised our kids. I'm super proud to work in this district. I'm thankful for our students, the families, the staff, the greater community. But I also am extremely grateful for the team that I work with. They make coming to work every day fun, even when sometimes the work isn't always super fun. And it's kind of hard to believe that we're in November because it feels like school year just started and really in just a few short weeks, we'll also be turning the corner and heading into December and we'll be trading our turkeys and pumpkins for mistletoe and, and we'll be looking at closing out the 2025 school year. So that concludes my comments.
Just to follow up to Dr. Reeves' reference to Veterans Day, do we have any veterans or anyone currently serving in the room?
Andy Falcon.
Andy Falcon. And our board member, Will Babbitt, also a veteran. Okay, we'll just do one at a time. And well deserved, well deserved recognition. Well, happy Thanksgiving to those of you here and those of you watching from home. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.